Good evening, because we're the host team, the home team. I'd like to just welcome everybody here to a joint meeting between the Camden Select Board and the Rockport Select Board. It's Monday, October 22, 2018. It's my understanding that it's been many years since we've had a joint meeting like this, so I find it pretty exciting to have a chance to meet our friends and neighbors and talk about a few issues that we might have in common. I guess what I'd like to do is just start by doing some introductions around the table so we all know who is who, and then we can go ahead and get started with the actual presentation and discussion.
Start that way in case people come in.
So we'll start there with Mark.
Mark Robinson, Rockport Select Board.
Jeff Hamilton, Rockport Select Board.
Deborah Hall, Rockport Select Board.
Allison McKellar, Camden Select Board.
Ken McKinley, Rockport Select Board.
Mark Robinson, Town Manager for the town of Fayette.
Bob Falchiani, Camden Select Board.
Taylor Benzy, Camden Select Board.
Doug Cole, Chairman of the Rockport Select Board.
Rick Bates, Town Manager, Rockport.
Mark Ratner, Camden Select Board.
The first thing on our agenda today is to talk about a program that's called Raise the Floor. I first heard about this about a month ago when Rick approached me and told me that there were several towns around that were talking about this program. I didn't know anything about it, and since then, he and Audra have done a little bit of research, and between the two of them, they decided to bring that to our boards, and because it involves both towns, it seemed appropriate to at least have this as a discussion item on our first joint meeting. I'm not expecting that tonight we'll make any decisions, but I think this is just going to be an opportunity for us to talk it through a little bit, get the opinions, and then we can go forward with it individually as we'd like to. So without -- oh, and also, I'd like to point out that Rick and Audra both sent out some background information, which we have as part of our packet, and so, since Mark is going to be doing the bulk of the presentation here, I've asked that rather than do a formal PowerPoint presentation, we're all adults, we've reviewed our packet ahead of time, we know what's in here, so I'll ask him to say a few introductory words, and then we can get right into the question and answer portion of it, if that's all right with this group. Allison.
I mean, I don't know about in Rockport, but in Camden, we just got our -- we actually just got the agenda and just got the packet today, so I've been able to review it a little bit, but even some of the agendas were a surprise to me, so.
Any other comments before we get started?
I haven't seen much of it yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick, for getting it out early.
Apologies for not.
All right. Mark, do you want to lead your discussion?
Certainly, thank you. Again, my name is Mark Robinson, I'm the Town Manager for the town of Fayette. I'm entering my 15th year as Fayette's manager. I am here with a wholehearted and unanimous support of my five-member Board of Selectmen and five-member School Committee, and quite frankly, I'm not here to sell you a thing tonight, I'm here to ask for your help, and perhaps together we can help each other, as being characterized in a similar manner as minimal or low-receivership school districts. If the initiative that we're about to discuss is successful in the future and were in place this year, your school district would have received an additional $645,000. Now, how that translates to taxpayer benefit and $645,000 less money you'd have to raise from your commitments, I do not know, but I do know for Fayette, for us, it would translate to $206,000. A mil in Fayette, the cash equivalent of a mil, is $164,000. This year, we committed taxes and increased our tax bill by $1.55. The year prior to that, we increased it by a dollar. $2.55 increase over the last two years, we're hearing about it at the Fayette Town Office. I'm not a PowerPoint guy, so I -- Mr. Chairman, I greatly appreciate the intro. On the table in front of you are copies of the PowerPoint for your edification. We will not go through it point by point, slide by slide. You have other important business to take care of this evening, and I truly respect that, but I would like to go over a few things. One thing is this tattered graphic back here. There is a photocopy of that in your PowerPoint presentation. This graphic has toured the state of Maine. It's been to the southernmost point, and not to the northernmost point yet, but in Anadrishtik County, the westernmost point, in the Rangeley Lakes area, and we've got meetings scheduled for Eastport in the near future. My Board of Selectmen have commissioned me to spread the news about this initiative, because my community is on an unsustainable path. That graphic, the 22-year history of education subsidy for the town of Fayette, demonstrates how drastic a loss we've had to endure as a small rural town in central western Maine, and we need your help. The initiative that we're about to discuss is called Raise the Floor. On the drive here, I was actually thinking it should be renamed Establish the Floor. There is no floor. If we were to raise and require that all low-minimal-receiving school districts were to receive at least 15% subsidy of their total EPS expenditure allocation, then that would benefit this year 116 municipalities. It's my job to reach out to all of those municipalities, make them aware of this initiative, and spread the news, and ask for your support. Support comes in many ways. It can come by having boots on the ground, people helping lobby the legislation that has been drafted. It can help by Boards of Selectmen and School Committees approving resolutions in support of the legislation. It can come by contributing financially to the lobbying effort. In March, we started a financial campaign to raise $50,000 to hire the firm, Preddy Flaherty, to assist us in the lobbying effort, and I have here with me Dan Walker to my left, whom has done great work for us in the past, and a similar measure in 2008. In 2008, the town of Fayette and a band of municipalities and school districts worked diligently to seek a delay of penalty during the consolidation years. We were successful in that effort and protected over $8 million in school subsidy to the affected municipalities and school districts. This type of process works, and it will work with this measure, and we're committed to making it work toward whatever end. The conversation needs to be had, we need to advocate for our own schools, our kids matter, whether we're in a low-minimal-receivership district or not, all kids matter, and they're being treated inequitably, and that's what this initiative is about. We are not, and I emphasize, we are not competing for EPS dollars with our brothers and sister communities. We are requesting that the state consider a second tier of funding and make use of the EPS calculation in form of its data, the data that it produces, to determine whether or not you're above or below 15%. For those that are below 15%, a second tier of funding would be utilized to bring you up to 15%. Again, for the Camden-Rockport District, that would translate, if it were in effect this year, in excess of $645,000. There are several municipalities and districts that have joined in this effort, that have contributed financially toward our goal. We have not reached the goal, we're about over 50%, between 50 and 60% there, but we're at a point where we -- the legislation has been drafted, and we're going to do all that we can to continue this conversation at the State House. For now, there are several questions and answers that I'd like to provide you, and I'll scroll through to, as much as I can, to the PowerPoint, and then I'll turn it over to Dan. Let's see. So, the specific plan in pursuing legislative support for increasing funding for these districts at this point is a question. What are the -- what is the specific plan? And right now, we're still in the process of raising the contributions for the lobbying work, although the lobbying work will begin. We studied the issue. Last year, we started the conversation in terms of what would be, what would make the most sense in pursuing legislation to address this inequity. After the election in November, we will determine who we will pursue to sponsor the bill. We have two legislators that are willing to sponsor the bill, but again, they need to be reelected in order to sponsor it, so we have to wait until after the election. Past efforts have yielded very little movement on this issue. What makes this plan different? Well, as I mentioned, I mentioned our success in 2008 and '09 in protecting the $8 million. That process was difficult. Back then, both the Governor's Office and the DOE made it well-known to our brothers and sisters that this $8 million would be redistributed through the EPS formula and would go to them, so then we were pitted against, our brothers and sisters. That made it extremely difficult, but we were successful nonetheless. These things take time, they take energy, they take boots on the ground, they take parents and teachers and administrators and select people and school committee members, engaging their local state representatives, talking to their senators and their representatives. It is a collaborative effort to carry out this conversation so that we can bring equity in the funding to our schools. So it does take time, but it can be successful. Another question is, do you have other entities supporting the initiative beyond the school districts, and I'll expand that to municipalities? At this point, I can tell you that we have had the conversation with the Maine Municipal Association, I have not have had any conversations with the Maine School Management Associations. Both associations, I believe, would take a position of neither for nor against, because they would view this as competition for funding in some form, even though we're asking for a separate source, a second tier of funding for minimal-receiving districts. At some point, we hope to turn that around. As the coalition grows and we're pursuing the lobbying effort with the legislation, we will carry out that conversation again with Maine School Management and the Maine One thing that, as I mentioned, is a far prettier picture of this rough graphic behind I think if you conduct a similar analysis of most minimal-low-receivership districts, you could probably come up with a similar graphic. And, you know, we continue to realize that we are on an unsustainable path, and doing nothing is not the solution. This will start a conversation that may lead to other avenues, and we're very optimistic, given the wealth of response that we've received. In your packets, in addition to the PowerPoint, there are several references to various articles that have been written, in addition to the information in the PowerPoint that I think you'll find very helpful, and I encourage you to take time to review those, most notably, most recently, the Portland Press Herald's editorial on the initiative. I think they did a very good job in summarizing what it's about. Again, all kids matter. Our kids matter, your kids matter, and they're being treated inequitably. Our taxpayers are bearing the brunt, year after year, and your education costs, whether we like it or not, are going to continue to increase at a dramatic rate.
Why is that?
That's a conversation for another time, but we are seeing a significant trend in increased costs in education. Many of those costs are things that we can do very little about. We have a business manager in the office that may be able to shed some light in that. Special education costs are increasing. There are fixed costs associated with general cost of living, inflation, our tuition costs, we have a number of schools that we have to tuition, pay tuition to in our small community, and those costs are increasing pretty dramatically every year. 99% of our education costs in the town of Fayette are paid for by the local taxpayer. That's our plight. That's why my board is so committed in me having conversations with you all and throughout the state about the initiative. And with that in mind, I'm a Town Manager, I have other things to do, I have my regular job to do, so my time is limited in what I can commit to this effort. That is why the town of Fayette reached out to Dan and the firm, Preddy Flaherty, one of the more prestigious firms in the state, to help us with this. Dan has helped us in the past, he's very successful, he's someone who understands the issues, has worked his tail off on our behalf before, and we're very happy to have the firm and Dan's presence. I asked Dan to come to this meeting tonight so that he could talk in more detail about the legislation and assess where we are to date and how we can move forward with the conversation. So with that, I've just been kind of yammering away, I'm happy to field any questions and then turn it over to Dan for a few minutes.
I'd like to ask one question, just to kind of get the ball rolling here, and then we can open it up. So, for someone that's not familiar with really the process in your program that you started here, I guess my understanding of it is that if your town already received more than 15% of its EPS, that would be left alone.
Correct.
And if your municipality received less than 15%, it would be brought up to at least 15%.
That's the intent of the legislation.
So, somewhere in there, taxes are going to go up, or I suppose spending could go down at the state government level, that's the other option, but I mean, realistically, we are talking about a tax increase across the state, is that correct?
We are talking about more money for education as determined by the state legislature, whether they deem that necessary to raise taxes to do that or find other resources, that would be put in the legislature's court to decide.
We haven't identified a funding source.
No.
Okay. Allison?
I mean, I guess that was essentially my question as well, because I'm not really comfortable with leaving, you know, a bunch of rich towns getting together and forcing, and I know it's more complicated than that, but, you know, we are more fortunate than some, and having this be successful and the result is that Mainers lose health care, or that Medicare can't be expanded, or that they decide to take part of the bill and say, you know what, we can't, this whole second tier of funding idea doesn't really work out, and what's really going to happen is just, we are going to pull from the towns that are receiving 40, 50, 60%. So how do you, as I've seen so many times where the legislature says, okay, well, we'll take that part but not that part, and it doesn't, there's oftentimes unintended consequences. So why, I guess the first question would be, why have you not decided to identify a potential funding source? You know, sometimes you see, well, we're going to raise taxes on alcohol, or we're going to raise taxes on this or that, or why not propose that along with it? And then what are, how do we prevent some of the unintended consequences?
My purview on that, we would leave that up to the legislature. I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest how to raise it. My goal here is to identify the inequity and propose a method of addressing that inequity, and that inequity requires more funding, it just, it's simple as that, it requires more funding. How you fund that inequity, I would leave to the legislature, we haven't identified a source. We are competing with all of those other entities that you mentioned, there's no doubt about that. In the grand scheme of the, in the entirety of the state budget, we are looking at approximately, and this is an update from the DOE, approximately $22 million to be found within the state budget in new funding for education. $22 million, $22 million is a lot of money, but when, in the entirety of the state budget, it's not.
That's how much we would need in order to, because I've seen in the Portland Press Herald, it said 15 million, but that wasn't.
That was a new revelation to us. According to the DOE, they believe it would be more like 22, not 15.
Can I ask something, and I know we have a school board member in the audience tonight, and some of our local school board members at times have said, if the state would only fund the 55% of special education, we'd be fine, and that law's on the books, and they're not doing it. So I guess the question is, have we considered, you know, pushing a little harder on getting them to actually obey the law that's on the books and fund the 55% of special education versus this initiative? And I guess the other question is, if this initiative passes, how do we know they're going to do it if they won't do the 55%?
Well.
Aren't we on track? Isn't it going to be, aren't we going to have that by 2020? Isn't that going to?
Currently, the.
We have a legislative member here.
I'm an observer.
Well, let's hear what Mark has to say.
My understanding is that the state has approached, in the latest budgetary changes, 55% of the overall cost, which from a legislator's perspective, that's what their focus has been, not 55% of Camden-Rockport's cost, but of the overall state cost through the method of funding. So most recently, there was an article in the Portland Press promoting the fact that they had approached the 55% number. Dan, you may have more information to shed on that.
It's getting closer, but it's not, and it's 55% kind of, the requirement is 55% of all of everything, not necessarily special education. I mean, it's part of it.
I have three sort of questions. Number one, in looking at your chart, and we see the big falloff starting in, what is it, 2009, 10, 11, and then 12, since 2012, has that been a partisan issue in the legislature? Why did that happen? And number two, in seeing that, for the towns that have the 15% or higher, what do their charts look like? Did they take a similar fallout, or is it just for the towns under?
That's a good question. I think you'll find commonality for those towns that were defined after that period as low-minimal-receiverships, and I'm not sure if, like I said, if you conducted a similar analysis of your audit reports during that span of time.
I've already asked.
Okay, you may see a similar trend. Of course, some of that is a little inflated in that during the years prior to 2007, 2007 was our last funding year of a new school. So 2008 is more representative after, there's, part of that is the new school that we're not, debt that we did not have to, we did not receive subsidy for, but from 2008 forward, the past 10 years has been extremely hurtful, and it's just a reminder, during, for the last decade, it's not a partisan issue, to answer your question, my opinion. I mean, this happened under the Baldacci administration and has been sustained by the LePage administration. If there were a third LePage administration, I would still be here before you tonight. It's not a partisan issue from my perspective, it's a funding issue, and although you've heard, you know, the accolades that the state has restored its rainy day fund, guess what happened to Fayette's rainy day fund over these years, the last 10 years? We've had to use it to sustain and cushion the blow of the loss of this revenue. That's not uncommon with low-to-minimal-receivership districts and the municipalities that are affected by them. I, it's not a partisan issue. I do think that with, you know, a new governor, it's an election year, it certainly positions us in a better time to advocate something like this, absolutely, but we're at a point where we have to advocate.
I'd agree with that, it hasn't been a partisan issue, it's more of a geographical issue.
With the board's permission, I will ask our legislator, Owen Cassas, to come up. Owen, would you like to comment?
Please. On what part?
Well, we were casting aspersions on the legislature, not funding the, funding their obligation, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say there's maybe some truth to it not being a partisan issue, however, we passed recently a surcharge that likely would have resolved a lot of this, and because of a budget and partisanship within that, that surcharge was cut, and that would have likely provided the long-term funding source that you were looking for, and yet that is, those surcharges are not palatable to a lot of folks in the legislature. And I think that writing the inequalities is definitely a noble goal, trying to offer some potential solutions, you know, I talk to a lot of folks and I say, identifying the problem is usually pretty easy. Now, identifying solutions, that's a lot tougher, and so I think that you would likely get a lot more traction if you don't put the ball in our court to find all of these solutions, at least offering some thoughts around it, whether it's the Select Board that I used to sit on or the legislature, and I think you can back me up on this, we have a propensity to be lazy, and if you give us a good framework, we can then build on that framework. When you come to a committee with a concept draft and says, I want paid parental leave, period, end of sentence, now why don't you sketch out how it's going to work? We're going to go, that's, that's great, thank you so much, we're going to continue working on this, motion to table. So I don't have good solutions, I, this stuff is interesting. Didn't answer the question about whether other non-minimal-receiver towns, their graphs are going up. As far as receivership, are their bars, yours are going down, are theirs going up? And I, I mean, I am way outside of my league on this, I have observed the school board, spent a lot of time, tried to learn more about this, but it being a funding issue, it's going to be quite complex for us to come up with. I mean, we did 160 million last time, but that was a one-time deal, and so trying to figure out how to come up with another 22 million, we're likely going to struggle to see if we can retain 160 million, and to me, just similar to health care, bringing down the costs, stabilizing the costs of providing these services is the holy grail, because when you can stabilize costs and maintain, it's a lot easier to build out models that make sense. But if it's going to continue to skyrocket, we're going to struggle to find where that money is, there's, I mean, you've got to think a little bit about the revenue sharing, that's going to go back in 2020 to 5%. I know that's almost a Band-Aid on a bullet wound when we're talking about the cost of public education, but there's just, this is super complex, and so I'm still in learning mode and a casual observer.
Okay. So it's great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would note that Pete Orne, Business Manager, wanted to say something a minute ago, I think, I don't know whether you want to entertain that or not. He was waving out there.
I'd love to hear.
Does the board want to entertain questions from the public?
I'd just love to hear, and I think he's pretty experienced in the issue.
The answer is yes. Peter, would you come up at least and be on the microphone?
Don't bump your head on the TV.
And then, after Peter's finished, then we'll go to Dan and have you.
So the first thing I just wanted to mention, it was the 55% that you've mentioned for both the general-purpose aid for education and then the minimum for special ed, even if miraculously the legislature funded that tomorrow, as they legally should, it wouldn't impact these two towns by one penny. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear that it's, because we're minimum receivers, and it would only affect the borderline minimum receivers. The state uses a litmus test as to what that involves, and we are well beyond, below that litmus test in terms of our evaluation.
That's good to know.
Can I read something? I just learned of this late, earlier. I just learned of this late, earlier today, so I just had to write something down, but I've been working on EPS for five years now. I've been, it's been a passion of mine, it's been, it's, I'm so glad this conversation's happening.
You understand it yet?
I do. I do understand it, and I've, and I've actually, this is, this is part of a spreadsheet that includes every single, every single town in the state with a kind of a revision of EPS that I hope would be simple enough that the legislature would actually understand. So.
That's an eye bar.
Or low bar. So, as you know, my name's Pete Orne, I live in Camden. I'm a local school board member, but I do not represent the school board tonight. I worked closely with the EPS formula and its distribution model for five years and applaud the effort to update it. It is unfair, and as you've heard, its distribution method only uses property valuations as a litmus test for a town's ability to pay for the state's calculated minimum amounts, which by no means represents the true cost to educate our children. Their EPS formula is only a fraction of what it actually costs of our budget. This approach tonight, and Mark and I have talked about this, in my opinion, is the wrong approach. Currently, the state's approach is to use the town's valuation to calculate its ability to pay. So two average towns with similar valuations and population might be treated the same by the formula. But what if I told you one town's average income was $16,000 per head, and the other town's was closer to $40,000, with the state average being $17,000? One town clearly needs some help, but the other probably not so much. This legislation does not address income as it relates to high-income communities with low relative valuation. Some of these towns already are receiving subsidy and may receive more. Cape Elizabeth, with an average per capita income of almost $40,000, is already a 7.5% receiver of 1.25 million. They will receive an additional 1.25 million under this plan. York, Wells, St. George, Cushing, Alicehead, South Thomas, and all towns with higher-than-average income will receive more. There are many towns with high per capita income that currently receive subsidy because they have even lower relative valuation. Cumberland, with double the state average income, receives 43% state aid. That's incredible to me. North Yarmouth, with similar income as Camden and Rockport, receives 51% versus R9, which is actually less than nine, because R9 includes our one-time payments of debt service. So it's actually, we're receiving closer to 4% to 5%. Doesn't seem fair to me. For Fayette, this is a great idea because they're a low receiver and of low income, but I think they're an anomaly. They're in that perfect spot where this would be a great legislation, but then again, they came up with the idea, so.
There you go.
Fair enough. Second, money is fungible, no matter what restrictions we put on it, as mentioned a couple of times tonight. It can be used for any purpose. So this might work for one budget cycle, but then I can see it getting lost in future budgets. We can raise 22 million for one year, dedicate it for this, but then lose it in future budgets. I'd be concerned about that. In order to add to the general purpose aid for education, money will have to come from somewhere. I applaud the intent not to redistribute money, but it's just not a reality, in my opinion. Finally, the reduction of the property taxes in these towns will not be equal either. Because the current methodology of funding education is solely from property taxes, the relief will be distributed the same, the same way. So if Camden and Rockport does receive the approximate $1 million in additional state aid, and I think it's actually closer to 1.2 million if you take out the debt service, because I think the 600 to 700 is actually lower than what it'd be in two years from now when we don't get our state aid for, for debt service anymore. So if we receive that $1 million, and if you follow the 80-20 rule, and 80% of our property taxes is raised by 20% of our property, that may be right or wrong in these towns, I'm not sure, those who need the relief the most will not get it. So even on the local level, this can be addressed by the towns. I think if you look to Hampden, they've created a way to actually redistribute monies that actually use income and not just property tax. So I urge the select boards to work with other communities, the MMA, MSMA, and the Maine DOE, to come up with a sustainable, comprehensive approach to a fair distribution of our $1.2 billion in Maine's general purpose aid for education. I believe the current distribution method can be tempered with income numbers, but that's just one idea, just like this is just one idea. The current methodology is broken. This legislation, in my opinion, does not fix it, and it does, I think in my opinion, make it less fair overall for the state. So.
Thank you, Pete.
My opinion. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Well said.
All right.
I would like, Pete and I did have a conversation at the beginning of the meeting, and I do want to thank him for his comments. And there are many things that we, we agree on, and I think that what this does, most importantly, we need to work collaboratively, municipalities and their respective school committees together, to effect a change. This legislation is the start of a conversation where people like Pete can come in and offer a suggested change, and I welcome that, and I appreciate your comments tonight. This will evolve, but the reality is, unless we affect, we, if doing nothing will not change our status as low minimum receivership districts, we need to effect a change. This was the idea that we came up with after lengthy discussions starting last August, and then we presented that in March. It does not mean it cannot evolve into something else to more correctly address the inequities. So thank you, Pete, for your comments.
So my name's Dan Walker. I'm at Preity Flaherty. I live in Freeport, grew up up in Blue Hill, so I'm kind of from this area of the world to some extent. So I mean, you really nailed it. I mean, you really, those, we, you know, we've had a lot of those discussions that sound a lot like that, and so how do you, and I was talking, my brother lives in Cape Elizabeth, I was talking about this issue this morning as I was driving to work. He's like, well, we don't need any help. Why would you, you know, why, he said, I feel bad about that. But the bottom line is that, you know, they're in the same situation as friendship. You know, so how do you, how do we figure that out? You know, friendship gets 1%. So how do you, how do you figure out, you know, or Fayette, and, you know, so what, some of, one of the things we've talked about, and it's, it's hard to figure this out as you're trying to create a coalition of towns, is that, you know, you could put in, you know, I'm just, we're just discussing this right now, but, you know, we've thought of things such as putting income levels, you know, some threshold in here, but then, you know, you've got certain towns that want to participate, that may have an income level above that, so then they can't participate in our efforts here. But we're trying to come up with, with something that, you know, we've identified the problem. You know, we thought that, you know, we didn't want to change the underlying EPS, so we wanted to add more dollars. That presents, you know, a challenge adding 22 million. You know, back when we went after the, the school consolidation issue, 2008, 2007, 2008, I mean, that was, that, that had its own challenges at the time, but what was, what was a better situation back then was that it didn't cost, it really didn't cost, I mean, although the monies, the penalties were going to go into the formula, and it was going to go to the towns that had complied, so they wanted it. It was really about the penalties and penalizing people and trying to get away from those penalties. Here, it's, we are trying to put more money into, into the solution. And, you know, I've been working around the legislature for a while, and it's, it's a challenge finding money. It always is. And, you know, I sympathize with what you're talking about, the idea that we don't want to, you know, take that money out of, you know, it might be going into something that's perfectly appropriate. And I don't know if a lot of people are in the mood to raise taxes or, but there's, you know, there are, there are new revenue sources now that are coming in that we could, we could potentially identify. But I think the important thing is, for us, is we want to raise this issue with the legislature. We want to propose a solution. It may not be a perfect solution, but we want to propose a solution. And then we want to, you know, have a discussion there. It could end up being, you know, as, as Owen said, you know, it could be, okay, move to table, this isn't, but then what the, what the, what the next motion could be is, let's study it this summer, let's put a bunch of people around the table, and let's really figure it out if we can't get to the solution this year. But we really feel like we need to propose a solution. Again, may not be a perfect solution, but we can propose it and then work as hard as we can to try to find something that works, that will help these communities, you know, with this, with this inequity that we've identified. You know, I think we've already talked, you know, we've got some sponsors, you know, as far as logistics go, we've talked to folks from some of these communities that would, legislators, that if they get elected, would put this legislation in. And then we'd like, you know, it'd be good to get this in early in the process, to give us a good time. You know, the worst thing that happens at the legislature is things that come out at the end, and they get stuck in, you know, in political turmoil. If we want to get this thing in soon, so then it can come out soon, we get it scheduled soon, and then we have the education committee, you know, really dig, dig into it. I think that's all I've got. We could talk about specifically a little bit more about the legislation itself. I mean, it's pretty simple, you know, you know, it's, it's, we simply, you know, add, you know, right now, there's a, when you're calculating, when you're figuring out minimum state allocation, there's a 5% level, and we just simply make that 15%. So it's finding the sum, so you take the sum of the following calculation, so it's multiplying 15, and you might have it up.
I thought I did, I guess I didn't.
So it's, it's multiplying, so right now, it says multiplying 5% of each school administrative unit's essential programs and services per pupil elementary rate by the average number of resident kindergarten to grade eight pupils, as determined in another section. We, and so there's another section for high school, so we simply up, make that, move that from 5 to 15%. This does not, so if, if you did receive special education funding, that does get you to 15%, you wouldn't be eligible for it. So it wouldn't affect that. And then we also included a provision, and this came up late in our discussions, around including municipalities within SAUs. So you have certain SAUs that aren't, that, that aren't minimum, that are minimum receivers, but you, excuse me, that aren't minimum receivers, but you've got some of the municipalities participating there that don't get, they get barely anything. So we would allow for those municipalities, that, that calculation, to look at those individual municipalities, if that makes sense. And that's it. That's all, that's all this ver, you know, that's all what, how we've, how we've thought about this. That's it.
Could I, a quick question of our town managers. Can each of our select boards decide on this separately at our meetings whether or not we would like to be part of this? Or do we both sort of have to, and Mark, you obviously, or do we all, is it everybody in, or how does that get handled?
I would assume that we can choose to do it separately, but I wouldn't think it would be as effective.
If we had different votes.
Right. Okay. Well, that, that'll be interesting then, to, you know, how are we, as two separate boards, going to flesh that out? Allison?
One thing that I had seen in some of the articles was that in some places, it's been a joint decision between the school board and the municipalities. And so I guess that sort of would make the most sense to me. I, I personally am not ready to support this, but if it got to the point where, you know, we were talking with the school board, and it doesn't, for me, I haven't been looking at this issue for a long time. It's not something I've thought about as much as some of the people.
I don't think we're asking for a decision for any of us tonight, but what I am asking for is, you know, how do we move forward? What's the process going to be going forward?
And I guess all I'm trying to say is that I would prefer that it, the school board were as involved as possible, because I think there's a lot of valuable input there that I'm not going to come up with on my own, and I don't know if we have that expertise on our board.
Well, one of our agenda items tonight is interaction with the school board.
Perfect.
Next meeting.
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted to add that, and my experience has been with, with the various municipalities and school committees that I've met with, is that the municipalities seem to have more discretionary latitude and would work jointly with their school committees in terms of, in terms of funding. In some cases, it would be a 50-50 share of, of their, their contribution. But more often the case has been the municipalities served as the lead, but engaged the school committee in the process. And, you know, each community is, is a little different in terms of their approach.
Bob, help me out. Hang in here. How are we going to move this forward to resolution, one way or the other?
Well, it seems to me you've got a couple of actions, items that you need to achieve. I would agree that, I think, if both towns are interested, I think both towns should, one, first, well, have a, have a meeting with their individual school boards, because I, as one, would certainly like to understand more about the challenges the school board sees from these kinds of issues and not, because I'm not a school expert and I don't want to be. I think that would be one step we would go to, and I would reconvene at that point with the two select boards and discuss the findings and the issues to see if there's any, any, any significant issues that might affect our decision going forward. Because I think it should be the two towns working closely together, because I agree, divide and conquer is not, wouldn't be very positive, in my opinion. I, I think these issues are, it's pandemic in the United States today. Everybody's, the Robin Hood, you know, agenda is, is happening at all levels of government because we're trying to figure out how to pay for many needs of, at all levels. And I don't believe this is about necessarily about raising taxes, not from, it's more about, you know, funding on some kind of a level playing field. And that, that's the issue. And I think it's, to me, it's not raising the floor, it's raising the issue, is the moniker, if I would use. I think it's important to raise it, attack it, and, and I don't think we need to solve it. That, that's not in the capability of our select board, not me, I only speak for myself. But I think that's, that's not it. But I think we need to have at least that one more step, and then bring it to a table discussion about moving it forward.
What sort of a timetable do you folks have in mind? I mean, do we have a deadline for this?
In terms of the fundraise effort, to fundraise the lobbying dollars?
Well, getting people on board.
Our initial goal in March was November 1st.
That's probably not going to happen.
Yeah, so we're, we're at a point where, you know, we, we have raised enough money to, to, with a little persuasion with Dan here, to continue to draft the legislation, and, and we're going to push forward with what we've raised to date. Of course, this will be an ongoing effort, and how this evolves as we gain more feedback, like the good feedback we've received tonight, I think that, you know, we, we're in it for the long haul, and this will take time. So, and it will take lobbying dollars. And, and given that, the word lobbyist, I know for some conjures up a negative reaction. Sorry, Dan. But the reality is, we're all, we're all, yeah, yeah, double, double whammy there. At some point, you know, we all lobby. We talk to our state senator, we talk to our state representative, we want them to support this or that. We're lobbying, and we need, as I said, we need to advocate our own behalf here.
Ken, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I just was going to say that I think getting the school boards involved is key. We don't want to be working across purposes with our school boards, to be sure, and I don't know whether you guys are aware, we have two different school boards here, one that's the two towns and one that's five towns. And so we get into, it becomes an even more complicated, more ass here, because the five-town district gets a different reimbursement rate than the two-town district does, and things of that nature. But I would, I think that having the school board take a look at it, because they, they know a lot more about the, the funding stream and the subsidies than we do. And if, and I, quite frankly, I think that Bob's idea of raising the issue is a good one, because when, when Pete came up here and talked, he had a lot of different ideas about it. And I think the formula is what needs to be worked on, and how we work on it is probably a really complex issue, and I guess the question right now, and I don't know the answer to it, is, is this a, a good step in the right direction, or is it a Band-Aid that's not going to, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is, but it needs a lot more work, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Pete sort of hit on a concern that I had, just reviewing the packet before we came in here, in terms of how it affects income as opposed to property valuation. The, as you mentioned, as, as we're getting more input on the campaign, and you guys continue to talk to more communities, including ours, are you open to seeing substantive changes in the way that the legislation is drafted as you continue to hear from more people, or are you pretty dead set on the way that it's set now?
My initial reaction, because we did have those conversations. My initial reaction, because we did have those conversations, based on the conversations I've had with legislators, that there seemed to be great disinterest in touching the formula. That's why we didn't take the approach of, we wanted to be mutually exclusive from, from the EPS formula with this initiative. I'm not, we have a legislator in the House here, so I'd yield to his perspective.
I'll yield to the paid lobbyist.
Sure, I'll take it. No, but many efforts have gone in to change EPS and have failed. I mean, many, many. And it's, so it's a bigger issue. That affects every, you know, community in the state. This one, we were hoping that we could really, you know, just, just try to fix this particular issue and try to, as we've talked about, raise the floor. So in, in our colleague Nancy Cronin, she talks about, you know, it's all about the student and trying to create some type of minimum level in every community for every student. And that was kind of her, the way she, she conceptualizes it. And we could do that through, you know, simply you can inject this into the formula where then, you know, those who don't hit 15%, you just add more to reach 15%. But I think that, and this is, this is an effort, and, you know, we're very open to going through that and hopefully, you know, as we move forward, as we have a collection of communities, we're going to work with whatever works best for that collection of communities going forward. And then as far as, you know, a magic number of, that we want to hit before we start, you know, we're going to start lobbying. That's, I mean, this is always, is more of a goal than anything. It's just something that we felt like this is about how much it's going to cost, how much of our time it's going to take. You know, we've been working on this for almost a year with you and, you know, we have been, you know, been, been getting paid a little bit from, thank you, Fayette, but, but we're just trying to get this in a position where we can all go forward with it and something that works.
Doug?
Yes.
It seems to me, as I think about it, to your question, and I'm wrestling with it, if the two towns should approach this together somehow, perhaps there's a mechanism here to get a couple of members of each of our boards together with, with the cooperation of the school board also and, and a small group to put some more flesh on the bone for the two towns. And then we can take that individual information to, individually to each select board for discussion. At the end of the day, we have to, you know, get a majority of our own select board and yours. And that way, that's, that's a road, because I, I hear a lot of questions about, I don't, and me too, I don't understand all of this. However, I think the issue is, is a very high priority and I want to pursue it with a vengeance. But I think that's, a mechanism like that might at least allow us to bring the discussion, the issues to a more of a core, so we could bring it to our select boards and discuss it individually and then take it from there collectively.
Maybe you could ask for a recommendation from the school board?
Well, absolutely, absolutely. I think it's essential. I think it's absolutely essential. Because I, I hear things about, you know, the comments here about school costs rising like crazy. Well, that's the school board issue. You know, what the challenges are going forward, how this may, I'm just opening up the discussion, how this may hurt the, the school boards. If there's such a thing, I'm not sure it does, but I want to hear it. So I think it's important they're engaged in this discussion, if they're willing, with the members of the Rockport and Camden select boards to, like I say, just raise the issues that we want to bring back to our individual select boards for a discussion. And lastly, for a joint discussion between the two select boards to hopefully approve or disapprove this going forward with the two towns. I don't have any way to do it.
All right, well, we're almost an hour into this discussion. Do we have any other questions or comments that we want to do before we move on on the agenda? I knew, Owen. Just one more thing. We're going to hold him to the microphone, Owen.
Hold him to it.
So here's, here's my quick thingy to get off, and, and it's probably not even so much of a question as it is a, whoa. So when we talk about, you know, state spending and all that stuff, you put Health and Human Services and Department of Education, that's two-thirds of our state spending. It's gobbling up lots and lots of money. So there's not a huge appetite for finding more new money for various different things. So the, the question that I have is, and it's, it's almost a cautionary thing for our municipalities, this is an extremely complex issue with EPS formula, with all the various different valuations of property taxes, with the valuations of income coming in. This is super complex and I wouldn't necessarily want the two towns trying to craft a solution for a statewide, very complex issue. So the question kind of is, what are we doing on the state end that models this out? Being such a big draw on our resources, it seems like a wise move to try to model this out in a comprehensive way with our EPS formula, with all the data that we have, so that we can start fiddling, for lack of a better word, okay, if we put more resources under your model, boom, certain areas glow green, certain areas glow red. Okay, what if we, what if we added income-based to the EPS formula? Boom, what does that do? Run the model, run the model. I'm a very visual person, and though I represent Camden, Rockport, and Nilesboro and have their interests at heart, we are one big living, breathing Maine ecosystem. And so pulling that string of yarn over here and not knowing what it's doing over there, so I just, it was kind of a twofer. One, that I would tread lightly for the towns on investing time and resources into trying to solve this problem. And if, if that's something to where your efforts could be placed, potentially partnering with the state with our data and trying to help this, and just totally as an aside, modeling of complex problems like this is something I've become increasingly more fascinated with because we realize, I'm looking at Camden and Rockport and I want their best interests. And then the next thing you know, Dover-Foxcroft is going, what the heck did you do to us? So just kind of throwing it out there, do, do you have modeling like that that is helpful with the decision-making process?
Yeah, well, actually, we took advantage of, of the EPS data sets, the ED279 data to, which led us to this conversation here. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to stay mutually exclusive from the formula itself and just identifying that segment of the state that is, that qualifies as low minimal receivership districts. Because we didn't, did not want to, again, based on my familiarity with the perspective of other legislators, not to touch the formula. And, and hearing Peter's presentation earlier, I mean, there is an opportunity for this effort to evolve, but it would take the legislators that, that perspective to change, that they would be willing to consider some nuances that wouldn't pull the yarn in the, in the opposite direction of one community, but would address the inequities that we're trying to address with this effort. So I applaud more thought in that direction and appreciate your concerns, but we need to move forward in order to have that conversation and do so collaboratively as a coalition of, of low minimal receivership districts and school, and have our school committees engaged with the selectmen and, and working collaboratively to push forward the conversation so we bring it to you, so it can be further analyzed. You know, I'm, we're not saying this is, this is the end-all, be-all solution. This is not a solution. This is just a simplistic perspective of how to address funding minimal low receiverships.
I just wanted to clarify, my recommendation is not about getting into minutia. It's about developing the pros and cons of the information so the select boards can decide whether this issue is worth raising, period. Try to solve the, get into equations and be as smart as Pete, and no, we're not going down that path.
Do we want to sign on with the coalition or not?
Raise this issue, because it's, we don't, I keep hearing.
Raise the issue.
Well, it's just.
You may have just changed our campaign.
Well, that's, that's the core, because if you try to solve any problem upfront, especially with my lack of intellect in the area, good luck. But I can wrestle with whether I feel this is an issue that's worth raising. And I think the information from our respective board members and, and the school board will give us that information so we can make a decision whether to move forward with the issue or not.
And parting, I don't think that we're opposed to.
Wait a minute.
I think we're opposed to touching the EPS for things that don't make sense. If you make it make sense, the legislature is not opposed to taking up new things. It's, does what you're proposing make sense in the long run?
Well, just a last point on that is, is that we, we did input, well, not the collective, we, you and Nancy did, right, Nancy? She, she input everything, all those, all those, those forms from every community in the state into this massive spreadsheet that we have. And then we were able to put in different, you know, okay, what does it look like if it's 10%? What if it looks like if it's 15%? Who's there, who's not there? And we were looking at all these, so we've been kind of doing that. And then we met with the Department of Education as well, and that's why, you know, we were estimating it to be 15. Like you said, they said, no, it's going to be more like 22 million, you know, so that's where that, that came from.
Question, how many fit into that low and, and high, medium and high category that we do?
Currently, there are 116 municipalities. If it were in place today, that would benefit from that.
Are you, are you cherry picking or are you planning to visit every one of them?
No, I, my, we have reached out via mail, email, and phone call to all 116.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out whether you're trying to find places that have possibly more clout than others.
Correct.
Or whether you're going to do everybody.
Right, for the purpose of raising funds for the lobbying effort, I have hit the larger, larger school districts in terms of coordinating opportunities to do exactly what we're doing this evening because those districts and municipalities tend to have the latitude discretionary funding to assist us. And we, you know, to date, you know, as I, as I mentioned, I think we've done quite well in a short amount of time. I still have a number of presentations that, that I need to make in, in the coming months here.
But there are clusters, so we'd go.
Yeah. Well, I was always wondering how Esport fits into it, because I'm familiar with Esport and I, I figure they're on the lower end of things, but yet they fit your.
It's the plan to, to meet and greet as many as possible with the, the amount of time that I have.
What's his name, from Machias?
Scott Porter.
Scott Porter. He's, they're in.
Yeah.
Allison?
Just one last tangentially related.
You sound like Owen.
The, just not wanting to miss the opportunity that we have, the municipal lobbyist in the room. A lot, I'm just wondering if there are groups of towns that have gotten together at any point to try to do what other states do in terms of allowing municipalities to tax things locally.
That's a good question.
Because we're always struggling to find new revenue sources for things. And now, I don't understand why Maine hasn't made a push. If we could add a 1% tax to something like, you know, we're about to maybe ban plastic bags, for instance, what if we could slap a tax on that? Or we could put a tax on lodging or?
You know, you make a very good point, and Owen probably has a response to this too, but the, you know, it's every, every year, there's local option sales taxes. Yeah, they, they get proposed every year. And there's certain lobbies that are more powerful than others.
Do we need a lobbyist to accomplish that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a clash of lobbyists on that issue, you know? And so I think if you carve out, you know, if you don't make it everything and you carve it out for just certain, let's just put, there's certain industries that it affects more than it affects other ones. Like, for example, things that cost a lot.
Cars.
Cars, for example. And so that's an issue. So I read this really interesting article a little while ago about Oklahoma City. And they've completely, that city has transformed itself over the last 20 years. And they asked them, what, what was the single biggest factor? And they said, local option sales tax on various things. And so I think it is, it is a method that communities can do it and do it in their own way, but it's something that needs to be overcome at the legislature.
Is it following one party lines or?
Kind of. Kind, I think more so. I think it's generally.
It's a bipartisan issue then.
Generally, Republicans oppose it and generally Democrats support it, generally.
But it varies across the country.
Yeah.
Well, what, how about then if Bob and I and Audra and Rick sort of get together and then bring some to our select boards and then we'll try to do an ad hoc committee and carry it forward. There any other questions?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank Audra and Rick for their coordination of this event and giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight.
Well, thanks for coming over, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our pleasure, thanks for having us.
You can stay for the rest if you want. Well, that brings us into actually our next agenda item here, which is interactions with the school board. Again, just a few introductory comments from myself. I understand there may be some people here tonight that don't want to have this discussion, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. From the Rockport standpoint, our comprehensive plan clearly calls for us to meet regularly with the school board, just to discuss issues in common. So we sort of have that directive from our comprehensive plan. We have not followed that, but be as it may, it is there. I think tonight's meeting provides us a good segue, you know, into this conversation because there are clearly opportunities for the select board and the, the school boards to act together, even though we're individually elected board, for the best of our citizens. I mean, that's what we're here for, we're to serve our citizens. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. You know, if anyone wants to express reservations or whatnot, we can go ahead and open, Allison.
I mean, I guess what was frustrating to me about seeing it on the agenda was, it doesn't really seem like, and I don't know how, maybe I was the last to get the agenda, but if we wanted to try to focus on improving relations with the school board or interacting more with the school board, I would have preferred to see an approach like, hey, a couple of members from each of the select boards and the school board get together and brainstorm or inviting the school board to do something with, with notice, but just putting it on an agenda, you know, interaction with the school board. Even to me, I was like, whoa, what is, you know, what is that? And it's like an alarming thing a little bit, I guess?
It is what it is. You know, I mean, the school board's out there, the select boards are out there, we don't talk much to each other, although I guess in the past there was more discussion. And there've been some hot button items in the press recently, and what's our responsibility to the folks that elect us? And, you know, here we are, you know, sitting down to talk about it.
I mean, I talk to the school board members actually a lot, but.
I don't. So should we, maybe we should talk more.
Join a committee maybe, I don't know, but.
Well, I want to add a little history to it if I could, sounding like Steve.
Deep beverage.
But since I've been on the board, every year, we've had an annual, sometimes twice a year, but mostly just once a year, where we've had a report from the school district. Often it's the superintendent or perhaps, I think the business manager once. And, and we have tried and have had, and have sometimes had school board members talk to us as well to report on how things are going. And there's been some questions asked and things like that. I mean, could that happen more frequently? I think it probably could. But I think we have to be a little careful of, I mean, the school board has, they're elected to administer the schools, and they have a really hard job. I think quite honestly, they have a harder job than we do on the select board, that's my opinion. And we have to allow them to do that to some extent. I mean, shouldn't there be talking between us? Yeah, absolutely. But I don't, I don't think we want to get into running their area of expertise much the same as they probably don't want to get into ours. But should we talk from time to time? Yeah, absolutely.
I saw the agenda, Allison and I talked about it. And I, it's, when I went to the MMA meeting after I was first elected, they said something that I thought was interesting. They said, there are only two positions in, in, in a town that require residency for being a part of, and that's the school board and the select board. Every other issue, you can live somewhere else. You can, you can live anywhere and be in part of a committee unless you actually make a charter change about that. And I thought about that. And I thought, you know, as Ken just said, school board is responsible for the education of our children. You know, that's their job, they're elected the same way we are. And I consider their, you know, sometimes it seems like our select boards are somewhat arrogant in our, well, they need to talk to us, they need to come and report to us and stuff like that. I don't see it that way. I see it as they're a completely separate board with its separate job and their, the responsibility is equal to ours in just a different field. You know, I have no problem, I talk to people in, in, on, in the school situation, quite frequently ask a lot of questions. And, you know, I try to reach out to them. I think that, you know, for us to have a meeting about, well, how should we react to them? It's like, it's, we're individuals and they're, they're a board that, you know, is responsible for their area. And, you know, I, I'm sort of concerned about the way. And, you know, I, I'm sort of concerned about the way we've approached the school boards up to this point.
Okay, well, I guess, I don't know if there's some misinterpretation here, but I certainly am not asking for the school board to re, uh, re, um, what's the word I'm looking for, to.
Capitulate?
Capitulate, yeah, the select board. You know, I'm just saying, they have their job to do, which is to educate the children. And, you know, it's a fair number of our tax dollars. But we, as the select board, also have a responsibility to the same citizens to also look at what's going on around town, how we spend our tax dollars. And rather than one board being subservient to the other, doesn't it just make sense to communicate back and forth a little bit, um, about how things are going? I mean, communication.
And, and, and that's fine.
And I think ours is obligation by charter.
Right.
So, we, we have more of an obligation.
Right.
You know, than.
But with, without an obligation, I, we're talking about a dialogue. I'd say what the big deal about a dialogue is, I would like to learn more about the challenges that the school board has. I, I really don't know them very well. We just talked about an issue, raising the floor, raising the issue. I'd like their perspective on that. I mean, take, put your school board hat back on, Pete, and we can talk in that perspective in a different meeting. I think it's a very smart thing to do. Uh, we're not talking about one literally capitulating to the other, it's impossible, it's not gonna happen. But I think, um, uh, if they're not interested in our challenges, that's fine. But I am interested in their challenges. I wanna hear them and I wanna see what, what they see coming down the pipes. It helps, it helps know, it represents sixty-five to sixty-seven percent of what we spend in each of our, roughly, in each of our towns. I, I'm not gonna, I can't control it, I don't intend to, I don't even wanna ask. I just wanna know what their challenges are.
Eighty percent of problems in the human condition, in my opinion, are due to lack of communication.
Absolutely.
Um, so I, I do believe dialogue is a, a good thing. Allison?
When it comes to interacting and communicating more with the school board, I do think that we need to do much better and that part of all, some problems in town or missed opportunities in town come from the fact that we just don't maybe communicate that, that much. My objection was the way of going about it. Um, just sort of, I, I think we can, there are a lot of opportunities for working more closely. Obviously, they have infrastructure needs, we have infrastructure needs, they have, you know, buses that need to be fixed. We have plow trucks, probably lots of things need to go up on lifts. Maybe there, you know, there are probably all kinds of things that we can do in terms of internships and, you know, things with education and opportunities for project-based learning. And I think there are a lot of opportunities, but maybe, um, you know, and certainly in the Camden Charter, it also says, you know, that our budget committee is supposed to coordinate every year with the superintendent of schools. Now, that stopped happening a long time ago and it's probably, but the intention of it when they, they wrote the document was that the town as a whole, the people that are involved would have a greater understanding of what's going on everywhere, not just the municipal budget, but also the, the school budget. So I do see a benefit to that. I just think that there's a lot that can be done by each of us sort of taking the initiative to reach out personally, to ask questions when we don't understand something and that sometimes by just forcing it into a, oh, well, let's have a report every year from the school board or let's put something in place, I don't know if that's the best way, rather than us all just individually making a bigger effort to learn more.
It seems to me the action should be something like our two town managers should talk to the school board, see if they agree with the interactive dialogue between the entities and, and see if they, they agree that it's worthwhile if so we forward, if not, we don't.
Or each of us could just invite, you know, a school board member to coffee or something. I found that just sitting down and talk, I mean, I've learned a lot that way.
Yeah, I, I sort of get where you're coming from. But again, you know, an elected member of the select board, I think we need to do better than, you know, buying someone a cup of coffee and zoot and, you know.
And talking too.
Looking at policy and talking, you know, when it comes to making policy, so.
You were gonna say something?
Yeah, I mean, Audra and I, granted, we're not as, as good as, as we probably could be, but, but we, you know, we try to meet regularly with Maria, um, to just keep those avenues of communications o- open. So Maria knows she can contact us, we know we can contact her. It, we're, it's not like unusual for me to send an email to Maria or Maria to send me an email or text. And there's that line of communication that is, is helpful. Are we solving all of the problems? No, we're not. But it's, you know, it's, it, it is helpful to know that we, the three of us, I mean, we all serve the same people.
Sure.
That we communicate with each other, you know, we try to get together, it's probably three times a year. It's, I bet you we're three times.
A lot of it comes down to how busy everybody is, so it's not even, it's inadvertent when we're not meeting.
Right.
Meeting, yeah.
We try to schedule, we try to do it quarterly, but it seems like we end up being three times a year.
Right.
Because of conflicting schedules.
As I said earlier, we had the, we've had the annual roughly, and I don't even know if it's the same month every year when we run them as, as the select board. But I think we've found, I think Mark mentioned to me at this time, that he found it very informative this year.
Much better.
Uh, that we got a lot of information. And I think that's, our job as a select board is to certainly be informed about these issues so that if our citizens ask us about them, that we can at least, you know, to give them a partial answer or point them in the right direction and say, hey, go talk to the school board. Um, and, and sometimes these things are gonna arise organically. And one of the best meetings I ever attended as a select board, and I'm, probably nobody's left who went to that meeting anymore, but it was after the first middle school vote failed. Uh, the school board invited the select boards and we all met. And I remember in a room in a high school and we all sat around and talked about why, what happened and how do we move forward from here? And, and I don't know whether you guys were on the board at that time or not, and it was, uh.
I was on the board, I don't remember that.
But it was a good meeting. It was, uh, it was a good meeting and it was, it was worthwhile. And it was the genesis of the next phase of, of that process, I think. And it was, it came about because, well, I guess a crisis, so to speak. You know, the, the vote failed and now what do we know about our failing middle school? And, and some of that was the discussion that started about, do we renovate or do we build new? But anyway, it was, it was a very good meeting and I think it was worthwhile. And I think that the board, the school board was able to take input from the select board and move on with that. And so some of the, sometimes those things are gonna happen, maybe they won't happen every year. I think the report to the select board, the discussion on at least an annual basis is a good thing. And, and, uh, you know, trying to force it into a quarterly or monthly thing, I think would, would be a disaster because they don't have time and we don't have time.
Okay. So, we can agree that we'll demand that the school boards be here next time? Okay, so, anyone else have any other comments on that, uh, issue?
Do they wanna say anything or?
Matt, you wanna say anything? Um, okay, and then finally, I think probably the thing most of us were really looking forward to almost eight o'clock is, you know, talking about some opportunities for possible joint ventures between our two towns. And I'm just, go ahead and throw it open to any ideas and.
Well, we already have some that are, seem to be working well. We have a common assessor, uh, we have a common police chief. Um, and I believe in the managers can, we do some joint purchasing with some things, I think, but I'm not sure. Fuel or something like that.
Safety vests for cleaning up the litter off of the road.
I, I just came from energy committee meeting in Camden, and it was our energy committee. And we're in the process of looking to take over ownership, uh, maybe, uh, of our, uh, streetlights from CMP and changing them to LED, hopefully, dark skies kind of thing. And our energy person wanted to know if, because I believe Rockport owns a bunch of your streetlights already. And are they all LED at this point?
No.
Wanted to see if.
We don't own any. No, no, I'm sorry, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't own any of our lights.
Okay, 'cause we have a.
Except for the harbor.
We have a couple, uh, vendors that work, uh, I think with PPAs, much like we did at a solar farm, where our savings would be substantial if we go ahead and do this, if, if everything checks out. And they just wanted to know if Rockport would be interested in exploring it with us.
We started that process, uh, back, I think when you.
Perhaps in Rockland.
Rockland, right. We started that process when we, when you were in Rockland. Um, and it kind of fell, fell by the wayside of, you know, it didn't, it didn't rise to the level of needing to do it. But that potentially would be an area that, you know, the, the pathways committee works well together. Having a, kind of a joint committee to look at this as an option, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I think one of the reasons we, we sort of stepped back from before, I think, was mostly cost.
It's cost, right.
Very expensive.
Yeah, well, the great thing now is, is doing this at PPA. So there is no basic cost to town and actually provide savings.
I'd certainly be interested to hear about that.
Yeah, so if Audra, maybe Audra can pass on to you.
Yeah.
With the information we have so far.
So I think Rick and I, what we can do is we'll reach out to some of the towns that have already done this because it's always, you know, it's good at this stage where there's a wave of towns that have already gone through this. So we can ask our colleagues what their experience was and go from there.
Cool.
One of the issues that came up in our discussion, I don't know if you've heard it in your committee or not, was the whole wildlife issue where the circadian rhythms of the wildlife are all screwed up by these lights.
It has come up and it depends on the, uh, the color, the blue light, color of, uh, of the blue light and trying to, there is some sort of impact on that.
Yep.
Um, is, uh, so it's come up and they're aware of it.
The lights are much better than they, they were when we put them in down at the harbor. They're, they've, the quality of the lighting is much, much better.
In fact, uh, CMP just did, uh, two, because CMP, uh, was willing to do a, a couple test lights and they just put in two test LEDs in, in Camden, um, that are at the corner. I think one's at the corner mechanic in Washington and the other one is at Tannery Lane in, in, uh, Washington, I believe. And, uh, and they use a little brighter, um, figure than we're, we're looking for if we were to do it ourselves. But you can at least see what the LED lights look like.
Ours were at ninety-one and have been there for several months, if I'm not mistaken.
Did the state put those in?
The state did, yeah.
They're a far better light, but I'm curious as to what, because you can't just arbitrarily put your lights on CMP's pole, what cost would there be?
Well, that's.
From them to us to lease a part of their pole.
Yeah, that's why there, there are companies that have come, much like Revision is doing solar, the companies have come up that have all those things figured out. We've contacted two of them and, and gotten some information. And I'm not the, I don't, I don't have all the information right now, but we've been exploring it and it looks like it could be a good program. And this is, the savings, uh, the electrical savings, uh, are substantial.
Well, yeah, no doubt that there's a savings.
Rockland was three and a half years payback, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Pretty quick turnaround for payback, like three and a half years.
I think our lights are about two hundred and forty-eight dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
But we have to use CMP's pole to put them on.
Right.
So yes, you're gonna have a, a saving. And I don't disagree that the lighting is better, but it's gonna have to be a substantial saving somewhere 'cause CMP is not gonna let you just put a pole or a light up there without some cost.
And, and also one of the things we do is, we believe that there are places where we don't need lights. There are lights that are there 'cause they've been there for a long time, we don't really need them. And we'd like to provide a more dark skies environment, which is, seems to be, um, a way a lot of people would like to look forward. Our, our streetlights in downtown Camden, which we did ourselves, have been very advantageous to that.
We have lights in our, around town that I look at them and think, why is there a streetlight here? It's, it's, it's out in the middle of no place.
History.
Yeah.
Um, some of Rockport's comprehensive plan, I apologize, I was just going through it here. Two does talk about, uh, cooperation with Camden in terms of recreational opportunities, uh, public space trails and pathways, things like that. Does anybody here have any expertise on any of those things?
I think Pathways is doing a nice job.
Okay.
Yeah, Pathways, I, that, that committee is, is very functional, has been for a long.
Right, that's one of our, that's a really productive committee, they work.
They're doing well, um, and we've.
That's why I was saying that this committee may, modeling what Pathways is doing, um, this committee might be a, a good thing for us to look at.
And one of the reasons Pathways works is the people who are on are passionate about.
Yep.
What they do. And so if you can find those people.
And very organized.
Yeah.
Well, we do, sorry, Allison, go first. I can talk about a Pathways-related project that we all are gonna have to make a decision on.
Oh, boy, I forgot about that one.
Let's see.
Well, I've had a, anyway, do we wanna talk about it or?
Yes. I just wanna talk about affordable housing at some point, but it doesn't really matter where. We, since we're on the Pathways trend, you go.
We'll go to that after, so, if Doug says so.
Yes.
But, um, specifically with the Route One, we call it the Route One South, it'd be kind of Route One North for Rockport. Um, so that stretch of sidewalk that goes from Quarry Hill to Maritime Farm. I just spoke with the DOT, MDOT project manager today about that project. And it's inevitable that it's going to have to be rebid, given that it came in at an eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar construction cost. However, um, they are willing to, if, if the towns are willing to pay our share, which is the twenty percent match, they are willing to look at something that's between what they were expecting it to be, which was around, I think, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars and the eight hundred and thirty that it was bid out as. So I said, okay, well, does that mean we're looking in the six hundred thousand dollar range? And he said, yes, that's about the price. So they would still be willing to fund the project for around that amount if the towns are willing to put in our match.
At the eighty percent level?
They'll fund at the eighty percent level, we'll fund at our combined twenty percent match. So I think, you know, high level, I, this group needs to decide, are we all still willing to look at the twenty percent match if we're looking at a six hundred something thousand dollar project as opposed to what we started out with as, at a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar?
What is there, how are they gonna drop two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off, by rebidding something?
They think that a lot of it was a function of when, when they bid, who is available. But also, they said that they would be willing to look at the scope of the project and some design changes.
Thank you, absolutely, can do it.
Yes, so, some design changes, um.
That will work.
Yeah, so, timing. And also, uh, another efficiency we're looking at is bidding it out at the same time as the one oh five sidewalk.
Package it?
Package it. And just getting an economy of scale from having a much larger overall, you know, project that they're looking at.
Sure.
We, we currently, I mean, obviously, share Carrie with you guys and you share Randy with us. Are there any, I think you've got some department head openings coming up?
Not that I'm aware of, hopefully.
Okay. Oh, you didn't know?
Code enforcement. Well, I mean, isn't, is there?
I mean, that's, it's under the Planning and Development Director now.
Oh. Is your highway foreman going anywhere? Is he getting done, retired?
Nope, I don't think so.
Changed his mind? Okay.
I guess while, while that topic was up, I, on the police side, just a quick look around the table. Do the select boards think that that process is going well?
Yes.
Sharing of the police chief.
Yes.
I think it's going well. I occasionally will hear, um, a comment from Rockport citizens that feel they don't see as many Rockport patrol officers as they did before. Now, you know, this is anecdotal evidence and Randy's not here to, you know, explain the actual, you know, data. But I, I hear that occasionally, you know, they don't quite feel like we're getting the same service we used to get.
Yeah, I've heard the same thing, but I don't know.
We have the same, we actually have one, we're fully staffed now.
Yeah, and, and I've heard people say, well, the squad cars are always over at the, at the police station. And that's not been my experience when I drive down, drive by the police station.
Keeping, keep in mind that the, the two towns do cooperate in a lot of ways. I mean, there's, there's, you know, the Midco Solid Waste is a way that, that, that's a big item. Uh, ambulance, uh, you know, providing ambulance service, that's a big item. You know, there are a batch of things that we're doing now that, you know, that are big-ticket things that, you know, the two towns do a lot of cooperating. I can, is there more, more things we could do potentially? I know we're, we're also working with the school, um, the school board chair's leaving now?
Seeing that, yeah. I don't blame him.
But we're also working with the school, um, on our, on our ballfields because they use our ballfields, we use, you know. And, uh, and it's gonna get worse, they're gonna need to use our ballfields even more when the middle school comes down and, you know, there's gonna be a bunch of that work. Um, and for us, you know. And for us, you know, like our, our highway guys, they're not groundskeepers, they don't, they don't know how to do that stuff. And the school has a really top shelf grounds person there. And so our guys are learning from him, he comes over and helps us on our ball, ball fields, we go over there and help him on his ball fields. The end result is our ball fields look much better now, I mean, I, I don't know when the kids are going to start, middle school kids are going to start playing there, but our, our fields are getting in much better shape because we're working closely with the school field person.
Talking about the Marge Jones field?
Yeah, yep, it's, you know, it's come a long way in the past year. And so we're able to work with the school, you know, when they need, when they need something that is, you know, the heavy lifting stuff, you know, they, they don't have to go out and lease a piece of equipment, that we may have it, and we send over our, our guys to use the excavator over on their fields and, you know. Frankly, I think right now we're getting the better part of the deal, but, you know, I think there's going to be a payback when the school, when the middle school has to start using our facilities. So I think that's, you know, the, I, the two towns do work very well together because demographically we're very similar. It's an easy, it's an easy, it's easy for us to work together, I think.
That's why they call it Union Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Let me go back and refer here to that pesky Rockport comprehensive plan from two thousand and four.
You can read that on.
Well, and I realize this is the third rail of local politics, but this is why we get paid the big bucks. But there was a survey of Rockport residents that was done, and Linda can fill in the details. Rockport survey residents were generally interested in the potential for shared community services. Sharing police and fire protection and public works services were strongly favored, strongly favored by forty-six percent of the respondents and somewhat favored by another quarter of the respondents. Opposition to all of these shared services was thirty-one percent. So, you know, what about Department of Public Works? What about the fire departments, which have totally different cultures, you know, is there any opportunity there?
Well, I think we share fire by mutual aid, and I think that, that works pretty well right now.
I mean, I, I think I had mentioned to Rick, I think, about bidding out our asphalt projects. You know, the more tonnage one company can get, the better price you might get.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, that's a great, even though we have two different towns, two different, two different asp expectations.
We ended up using the same company.
Same paving company.
Yeah, we used the same paving company this time.
So.
That's true.
Yep.
Yeah, that is.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
But everybody knows that the order of magnitude of savings, if there is one, comes from labor. I mean, that's one of the biggest components of our respective budgets, so when you're sharing an assessor, you're sharing your police chief. Yeah, the more you can do in that area, you're, you're really, really taking a lot of dollars off the tax rolls. And that's what people are probably responding to in two thousand, whenever, in your comprehensive plan, it's black and white. Our two towns combined are of a size that is one borough or a city, it's no, there's no difference to it. Just, just some, it feels like in smaller communities is more of a political barrier to going down the path of combined services in fire, police, and public works, it's three of them in them. Sometimes Parks and Rec too, by the way, that, that one plays sometimes, but that's a little more complicated.
Parks and Rec maybe is one that isn't, is a, is an area that you, we could move into pretty smoothly.
Might be easier.
It, that one's not a, I, I, you know, I think the only.
Well, you don't have a department, do you?
Right.
No, we don't have a department, right.
You could get involved with the snowball a little bit more, would be nice.
Oh, no thanks.
We'd be willing to cut your residents a nice deal on season passes and you guys could feel a little more part of the community over there.
Part of the issue here is that, you know, we're in New England, and historically, if you look at New England, you know, every town had its own library, had its own government, its own constable, its own hospital.
That's true.
And the list sort of goes on and on, and, but the trend, I think, in government these days and, and just sort of society is that things are starting to combine, and when I look at my personal experience with healthcare, you know, when I first came to town, you know, you had the Knox Hospital, you had the Camden Hospital, and then you had Penn Bay Healthcare. And because of the rising costs and healthcare, it's just untenable to have three separate hospitals, you know, all competing for a very small pool of people. And so gradually, what happened is these other units evolved and, and Penn Bay became pretty much the large local player. But even then, when I was there, the whole discussion came up on should Penn Bay join Maine Health? And of course, that was a very contentious discussion back then. But again, I supported that because, you know, the future of healthcare is, you know, simply going to be large organizations. And I'll throw in my personal feeling too, that I think, you know, we need to have a single payer system at some point in this country. But, you know, I think that a lot of these services just need to be consolidated to get the value that, that the towns expect.
Well, I think what's worked so far is when opportunities have arisen, the two town managers have been able to, to strike at that and say, okay, here we have an opportunity to share an assessor at a certain time and it worked. And I think we can keep our eyes open for those opportunities going forward. I don't know that we can necessarily say as of date certain, we're going to have this department consolidate, that department consolidate, but when these opportunities come up because of personnel changes or something like that, that they should be explored at that time, that, that would be my, and I think that's served us well in what we've done, because when I was, first was on the board, we had two separate police chiefs, we had two separate assessor, you guys had an assessor's agent, I guess, at the time. So, I mean, we've managed over the last seven years.
I'd like to put that and add to Ken's comments on that. I think what we ought to do is just that, the two town managers, when an opportunity comes open, they bet it around between themselves. If it makes sense that it then come in front of the boards for review. I would offer that, consider things such as, we need to make sure there are no sacred cows in, in that consideration. It doesn't mean everything has to come, but oftentimes when you, you look at these types of consolidations or right sizing, so whatever you might want to call it, a lot of ownership by the individuals or the individual departments kicks into high gear, and as a result, some of these opportunities might not be best taken advantage of.
I was just going to say, I agree with, with Ken's approach to it, I think that organically, as it has in the past, when obvious opportunities come up, mostly because of personnel changes or whatever it might be, to have the conversation that clearly makes sense. Setting a deadline or trying to force a consolidation of any, any department just for the sake of looking at it from a numbers perspective is probably the wrong approach, in my opinion. But, yeah, I think if there's an organic place where it's opportunistic for us to at least take a, take a fair look at it, then that's, that's something that I would be in favor of.
So what we're saying is don't automatically back the position, but consider the options first.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that we, well, I, I know, I'm not saying that we should, you know, set a deadline and let's pick this department and do it, I'm not saying that at all. But I do think it's important for both Audra and Rick to sort of hear what this group is sort of saying, that, you know, just because a position opens up, maybe talk to each other a little bit before you.
I would have to agree with you, Doug, I think that if my whole, whole life has been finding opportunities, not let them hit me the back of the head. Sorry, that's, that's the way I work, so I would challenge the town managers to come up with opportunities that they see collectively from the town, proactively, not reactively.
With public works, I'm just so hesitant, because in Camden, I, I see that it works really, really well, it's just such a tightly run system that keeps its budget in check and helps with our committees and it, I also don't know how it works when, with the police, it works so well because we both have unions, I think, or is it, is it two different unions? Well, Randy's managed to deal with that, but when you have one unionized and one, I think your public works department is unionized, right?
And fires not either.
And ours isn't, so how does that, that is a concern for me or?
I'm not doing it tonight, Allison.
Yeah, I agree.
I would just, you want to, I, in case you were wondering why the hesitation about public works, that would be my.
I, I do think there is an opportunity, because I, I mean, just to be very direct about what's, you know, Rick is going to retire at some point, and that's going to fundamentally change our public works department and how it functions. And I think at that point, we're going to have to look at all options and what's going to work best, and that just opens up the opportunity to work with Rockport on how we.
Here's your public works director.
Yeah, Rick Seibel.
What's his name?
Rick Seibel.
Seibel, okay.
Yeah, he's threatened, he threatened to retire last year.
Every year, every year.
We've been able to keep him a little bit longer, but I mean, it's not going to be forever, it's, it's going to fundamentally change how we do things. And I think that, that's when we want to start to look at how can we perhaps work more closely with Rockport? So that, I mean, I do think that's in the not-too-distant future, we're talking, you know, maybe a year or two before that's going to come up.
Of course, we could start at the top and combine the select boards.
It's Union Street. Linda?
Has the two towns done any sort of analysis over the past five, six, or 10 years, if there has been cost savings? Is there, is somebody keeping a running, informal running tab?
Cost saves, cost savings by sharing staff?
Assessor, police chief, working together.
That's a great question.
Whatever we work together. There's no analysis?
No.
Mm-mm.
Assessor, police chief, that would be easy to discover.
Right.
Yeah, salaries.
Salary changes?
Don't see any there, but that's just.
Yeah, it's, the, the savings have gotten eaten up within, with inflation over the past two years, two and a half years.
Yeah, but it's still a savings, because the inflation would have been there with the old numbers too.
Right.
Those closest to it, I think, could brainstorm additional opportunities, that, you know, like asphalt wasn't even on my radar screen. And I'm thinking about stuff like that and saying, all right, there's a common bid, you have the volume there, the setup time, you can save money per mile in a hurry.
You hear that, folks?
Has Rockport chosen a replacement for midco solid waste yet?
No, it's on our agenda tomorrow night.
Oh, good, um, I, I think it might be worth, are you looking toward maybe at one of the select board members or are you thinking somebody that already has? Is there a proposal that's going to be voted on tomorrow night, or are you guys just talking about it tomorrow night?
Owen, you sent us a note, did, or did you send me a note?
I, I offered that if you wanted some recommendations, I'd be happy to provide them, if you felt, or the select board members felt that they.
Uh, the answer is no, but it's going to be talked about tomorrow and we'll see how the board feels about it, and then we may reach out to Owen or go from there.
Because we do have a midco solid waste meeting on Wednesday, so, and I think, you know, probably like what you saw a little bit, Doug, it's, it's not just another committee. And it's like a sizable, and you're looking at me funny, but I, I wasn't, that wasn't.
It's not just another committee.
It's, it's quite a commitment, and there's quite a learning curve, and.
We would hate with the press here to talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Well, it's talking about joint ventures and ways to collaborate, and this is an example of the way.
Filling the position is a little more than, anyway.
I wasn't suggesting a person, I was just suggesting, I think one of the things that's hopefully going to happen at a future midco solid waste meeting is that we're going to all be briefed a bit more on what the actual commitment entails. So it would be good if that, you know, maybe you just share with them your experience, or we, it would be great to have somebody.
On the agenda tomorrow.
Have somebody that knows what a big thing they're fighting off.
Okay. So, folks, it's almost two hours, which is short for us, but that's a good meeting. What would we like to do going forward? Would we like to try to do this in, in a year, in six months, or is it a nice meeting?
At some point, we'd have to deal with the interlocal agreement for the police chief, that will require an action by both boards and.
June of twenty, that expires.
That one, that is.
Okay, so that's a little wasted.
But we, I think we need to annually.
No, I think the current one allows it to go through.
You were trying to do these things twice a year, once.
Twice a year, six months. Twice a year makes sense.
Just, and.
The one thing that, the one thing that's important to me is that to not have a meeting where the agenda, you've got to take care of these items. I sort of like to have a free-flowing, sort of talk like we did tonight, a chance for people to just bounce things around, that's my opinion.
I agree.
Six months?
Six months, I'm totally in favor of.
Six months would work, because if you think a bit shorter than that, at one year, every single time you meet, it's going to be a new select board meeting, another new select board, and nothing is going to get done, whereas.
So let's say nine months, in case Ken's not here, we can have the new board.
Six months unless there's a priority comes up.
You said one year. All right, great, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, thanks for hosting it.